...20-day moratorium on demolitions within the Kahaba Project by the Kahaba Homestead Heritage Foundation. So, I know there's several here to speak about that. We'll hear from them. We're gonna, we got a lot of people. We won't, our policy's always been to allow, you know, everybody to speak. We need to try, we got, our meeting needs to start at 6:00, so we got more time than I thought we were gonna have, but we need to hold our comments if you can to a couple of minutes, three minutes, if you can. Obviously, we always tell everybody, if somebody speaks and you're in full agreement with them, it's okay to stand up and say, "I totally agree with them and what they said," and you state your name, your address, and say that, and it'll be on the record that you totally agree with that. So, we, that speeds things up rather than, you know, 20 people saying the very same thing over and over again. So, if you'll help us with that, we're gonna try to be, we're gonna move through this as quick as we can. We are gonna be, this is trustful. We are gonna be kind, and we're gonna be professional, and we're gonna love each other. We may not like each other sometimes, we're gonna love each other. We're gonna, we're gonna act like neighbors, because we're our neighbors. And so, we're, I, I just caution you, don't, don't interrupt somebody speaking, don't jeer, don't clap, don't, you know, throw things. Let's, let's just be kind and professional, and let's hear what people have to say tonight. So, we're gonna start, I'm, the Kahaba Foundation made this request, so we'll hear from, we'll hear from you first, if you would. And again, everybody that speaks tonight, state your name, your address, and if you can, hold your comments to three minutes.
Do I need to state my name and address as well? So, Amy Peterson O'Brien, 303 Brentwood Avenue, 35173. And y'all let me know, do I just read my statement, and then if you have questions, address those questions?
We have a statement, if you wanna just summarize it. Has everybody on the council read the statement?
Okay. So, essentially, this is a request of 120-day moratorium with exceptions made in cases concerning public safety, and this is all for the timeframe to preserve the status quo of the historic district. In particular, the, the status quo of the number of contributing resources within the district until we can present a comprehensive historic preservation ordinance for the consideration of the council. So, this is, this is incidental to our mission, which is to promote, perpetuate, and enhance the value of this historic district, trustless only historic district, this neighborhood as a district listed on the National Register.
Okay. Thank you. Before we take, council, if y'all are okay with this, before we take questions, let's just hear from everybody that wants to speak on this subject tonight, and then we'll, then we'll ask questions. Anybody else here tonight to speak for this, or, yes, sir?
You can come up there.
If you can, or if you speak loud.
I speak pretty loud. Leo Russo, 135 Fairlane Drive. My brother and sister-in-law on 300 Brentwood Avenue. And we've got a demolition permit. What's kinda funny here is, you know, demolition means taking apart something, destroying, taking it up. And a lot of people on this committee are the very ones who've started demolition on our house, because we were nice enough to allow people to take anything they wanted out of there free, and charge them down. We had people call who wanted to take out the floor, and we let them do that, take out doors, different things. We took some of the roof off, because we're gonna do something with it. So, we've started a demo, but it's some of the people that are here tonight to want, to stop demo. Don't quite understand that, but. And it's on the National Register, but the houses are not. The area is, but I just don't believe the houses are unless it has changed, because, well, you know Wayne Taylor, when he was on the council...
I'm not into it.
Yeah, you're not into it. But anyway, he said when he's on the council, they couldn't get it put on the National Register. Now, they may have, I don't know, but if they did, I'd like to see it written. But basically, what this is about is that people want to tell people who already own property what they should build. As a home builder, I build what you want. If, if you want a house with 10-foot ceilings, I'll build your house with 10-foot ceilings. You want one with 12, I'll build it with 12. I built one now, and it's got 12 and 10. So, the market decides. It's not individuals trying to change the world. And so, I don't really understand why people are upset if people are paying $300,000 to take that structure down, that they're paying $300,000 for the lot, basically. So, if you try to tell people they can't tear a house down, they can't build it, there's houses that are in pitiful shape, but they're still worth $300,000 because of the lot. So, if you're wanting to bring the prices down, that's the best way to do it, is bring them down. And, you know, that's, I guess, about what I think.
Thank you, Mr. Russo. Anybody else care to speak tonight?
Kathy Freeman, 410 Rock Ridge Avenue. I have also spoken to Mr. Russo about taking some parts from the house, and that is also part of preservation. We've tried to preserve as much of the materials, the original materials, as we could, so that's the reason for that.
Yes, ma'am.
Jane Anderson, 301 Brentwood Avenue. I can talk louder. Should I talk louder?
Yeah, talk louder.
Okay. Jane Anderson, 301 Brentwood Avenue. And the houses are not on the National Registry, but the district is.
Sure.
And there's a minimum number of contributing assets before a district would get removed from the National Registry. There's a threshold that we have to meet, and if we go below that, then we are no longer on the National Registry, which is kind of a big deal.
Okay. Thank you.
May I comment?
Let's let everybody else that had Russo's chance to say something, and then we'll come back to you, Ms. O'Brien. Anyone else care to speak? Yes, sir?
Nick Ramona, 203 Oak Street. I'm here to oppose this 120-day moratorium. Only because I guess I need to know more from you, what, to what end? Because I'm sure you don't want those to backlog in day 121, three or four, and then all right. So, you're headed, if it's the same process that we started a year ago, reforming council and exact steel, I'm opposed. It's gonna, you're gonna, if you're going to try to form a local government under the outbound historical commission, it's something we can't turn back from once we do, and you're taking away our rights, which will never be able to get back over the homes that we already own. And I'm speaking for a lot of people when I say that. I agree, we're opposed to that. There's a lot of good in your intent, but it's all, if it's like it was before, it's not some partial plan that you can build. It's all or nothing, and even though there's, you take some funding from federal government, I believe, once you do it, you really can never turn back. And it's nothing that we as homeowners are gonna see. So, I'm opposed.
Take this, Ron. Go ahead, somebody speak, if you'd state...
Joel Nix, 120 Meadow Lane.
And you just said, "I agree."
Yes, sir.
Okay. Hang on, we go, hang on just a second, listen. I wanna get Mr. Nix's...
Joel Nix.
N-I-C-K-S.
N-I-X.
N-I-X, thank you, that's why I asked.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, Chip Orman, 108 Pine Street. I just wanna say I agree with Mr. Ramona.
Okay. Thank you.
Ann Walls, 303 Lake Street. I agree with him also.
Yeah, John Garrett, 112 Meadow Lane, and completely agree.
Are you keeping up? Hang, we're gonna go slower. We're, we're, we're... Ran our clerk out.
I got 112 Meadow Lane.
I jumped, jumped here.
Okay. And 303 Lake Street is last name...
Ann Walls.
A-N-W-L-L?
Yes.
And Shep at 108 Pine Street is last name...
Orman.
O-R-M-N.
Yeah.
O-R-D.
M-O-N-D, right?
Right. O-R-M-O-N-D. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Yes, sir.
Mark Nix, 6813 Roosevelt Drive. I agree with Ramona.
Okay. Got it. Anybody else? Yes, sir?
Alex Walls.
Okay, right here.
Alex Walls, 210 Lake Street. I also agree.
Alex Walls. Got it. Thank you.
And Jase Walls, it's J-A-S-E, 246 Yule Street.
Last name Walls.
I think you have a better, thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else?
Glenn Jameson, 100 Red Maple Lane.
Red Maple. 112 Red Maple Lane.
100 Red Maple Lane.
100, thank you. My wife says I need to get my hearing checked.
I guess I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is, you're talking about enhancing value by maintaining your historical reference, but would you not agree that enhancing the homes around you would not bring about a more profitable neighborhood?
No. No. We disagree.
We disagree.
So, where's your facts behind that, or...
There are millions of facts on our website.
Okay, hang on, hang on. Let's, let's don't get into debate. We definitely don't wanna do that.
I'm just strictly asking, is, if somebody's building a half million dollar house next to you, how can you say that that does not enhance your value of your house?
It's, it's a good question, and, and the answer is a good answer.
I have another. How do you know someone will build a concrete block cube next to you?
Okay, so, we're not, well, we have building laws here.
Right.
But, hang on, we're not gonna debate, we're not gonna debate this tonight, so, with back and forth. I, I'm gonna bring a suggestion a little bit, I think, but we're not gonna, we're not gonna debate back and forth. Understand that there's two sides to the story, and so...
Yeah. Can I speak for...
Yes, yes, sir.
So, I'm Matt Galloway, 504 Rock Ridge Avenue. I'm gonna play a little bit of the middle. I, I understand wanting to keep value of, of homes. I purchased my home in 2018, because I wanted to be in the area. I, I saw a school that I think is one of the top in the state with Kahaba Elementary, and I think its leadership is, is gonna keep it continuing that way. I always wanted to be able to ride my bike to work, and so, I can step outside, I can walk to work, I can ride my bike to work. I love our area, I love the fact that downtown is turning into a place that me, as somebody who's younger, will take great ownership of and be very proud of. And to me, that's the value of where I live. And I spent three years renovating a home, kept the original hardwoods where I could, I had to go match where I couldn't. I've kept the same hardy board on the outside of the house, so I try to do things the right way. But then my question comes where, I'm recently married, and I do hope to have a family one day. And so, my house right now can't support having four kids. So, what does that look like for me? Does that mean that I can't live in my house and continue with that? That I can't add on? That, that's kinda where my questions are, and so, where I am is a little nervous about what could be decided tonight that will cause my family in the future not to be able to add on to a home, or to change a home that I would like to change because of the rules that are set in place tonight. I love that area, I hope that I never leave the area, but I also hope that if my family grows to a point where I need to do something to accommodate that, that I'm not having to buy another home, especially with property values I got in at the right time. So, I, I, that's my big concern, is what restrictions are about to be placed, because I think that my home is unique and it's special, but I don't think it derives its value from that, and I think it derives its value from the fact that we have an awesome city and great community to live in.
Thank you, Mr. Galloway. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
Can I just ask a question? Can I? No, I just, my question is just, what are, like, y'all stood up and said, "I agree, I agree." Are you agreeing that you don't want any protection, or that you just want it to stay local?
Yeah. Let, let's, let's don't debate that tonight.
Okay. I mean, that's just...
I, I understand, I mean, again, we're, we'll, we'll ask some questions, and the council will be able to ask some questions.
Then council make a comment. Council make a comment, because there have been additions to your question, there have been additions that enlarge a house a lot, I mean, my sisters, you've been looking at her too, that still maintain the facade of the original house, but are totally open on the inside and, and are made for living today with such a large family. So, I don't think that's a great, that's what we're asking for at all.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone that has both, who'd like to speak? Yes, sir?
Jase Walls, again, I don't, I don't agree with the moratorium proposal, I don't agree with much of what the group says, but I also don't like the process. It seems like this was a very rushed thing, not many people in the area knew about this, moratorium proposal, and as you can see, I think in a very short amount of time, a lot of people have been notified against, or of it, and are against it. And I know y'all have meetings, I've tried to read some things about the group, but, you know, a lot of us are young professionals, a lot of my friends are here tonight, because we don't have time to come to multiple things, we, you know, including these meetings. So, I take, I'm very opposed to how rushed this feels, to make, have such a major impact on the, on the area moving forward.
Thank you, Walls. Anyone else? All right, so, we'll, we'll close that part out. I'll make a couple of comments, and we'll allow all the council, and we'll speak on this, to make some comments. I, I've listened, and I was, I was part of, in full disclosure, I met with, I think we've all individually have met with Ms. O'Brien here and heard the presentation, and I concur with what Mr. Walls said, and the fact that I, I think this has really been kinda rushed through this moratorium. When, when I met with you just a couple of weeks ago, there was no discussion of tearing houses down, or moratoriums, or anything. It was all about y'all putting together a plan that would protect the integrity of, of, you know, what y'all felt like the area ought to look like, and, and maintain the historical, what y'all consider the historical look, or the preservation of that, and I understand that. I, I heard tonight, there's threshold that if so many are not done, that you lose the historical designation for the area, even though the homes are not on there. I don't know what that is, y'all may know what that is. I, I don't even know, I, I mean, I would, I would think there would be some homes that's been modified that meet the foundation's eye test, that might not meet the historical, that might get it all, I don't know. I don't know how that, there might be some that were built, that were torn down and built that still meets that. I don't know how that works, but again, that's, that's the first I've, I've heard of that tonight. I, I, I think, I think for me, you know, we, we, we need to hear, we need to hear from everybody. I know you are passionate about what you want, obviously, there's some passion on the other side of this, and we've had a, we did a moratorium a few years ago, and, and to get things in place, that the city did that, to, just to get things in place, we got things in place, we put a process in place, and that process has been used. Some would say it's working, some would probably say it doesn't work, but it is a process in place that the city, the city put in place, and I think to come back and change that now on, on this kinda quick notice without getting input from everybody, there's 287 houses in there, and, and so, it would be interesting to hear. I, I know I've heard presentation that historical districts add value to cities. Maybe it does, maybe it, I don't know that. I don't know if it does or not. I, I can tell you, the values in our city are out the roof right now, for whatever reason. Is it the schools, Mr. Galloway? Is it the walkability? I, I, I don't know. That, I, I think the, the facts are, the, the, this area, a few years ago, it, it, you could buy a house in there pretty cheap, and right now, you can't hardly find a house in there, and if you do find one, you're paying, even if you're gonna tear it down and build something else, you're, you're paying a premium. And so, I applaud all of y'all for, for that, that's, that's a good thing. What I would like to suggest, and obviously, we haven't talked about this, is that, that we, we call a special workshop. You know, there's questions, there's, there's people that wanna make presentations about why historical adds value, there's people that wanna say why it don't, but I would like for us to call a, have a special workshop session where everybody in that area is notified, and, and everybody can come together, and we can ask questions, we can debate, we can, we can talk back and forth in a civil manner, but, but that we can do that kinda thing before we just go out and, and make a decision like this. I think there's legal ramifications for the city, and we, we haven't talked to the legal counsel about this, because we only knew about this a couple of days ago, but I think there's legal ramifications of us making some kinda move like this, and I'd, I'd wanna consult with him, and I would want him, I would want our legal counsel to be a part of that discussion as we move forward in a workshop. So, my, that's my suggestion tonight, is that we, very soon, I, I'm, I'm not saying, you know, let's do something next year, very soon, let's, let's find the time, we can have a special workshop, that we can invite everybody in the area to come and, and be a part of it. It's dangerous, it's risky, because people are gonna disagree, and we don't wanna have a free-for-all, but we'll invite the police to come if we need to, and, and help with that, and choose back here, and we, we bring the force out. We, we won't, we won't need to do that, because again, this is trustful, and you're, we're not gonna act that way. But, but that's my suggestion to the council tonight, is that we very quickly have a special workshop where we can inform everybody, rather than just sliding something in here on a two-day notice, let's inform the neighborhood, this is what's trying to be done, this is what we wanna do, this is what the foundation wants to do, and let's bring everybody together, and let's hatch this thing up.
Council President.
Yes, sir.
Amy, how long do you, your organization, how long do you feel you need to be able to present your plan? Is your plan close to being ready?
We want input from all the residents, so we're, we're hosting, we've got a plan in place to provide a weekly opportunity for face-to-face, people that want to come and express face-to-face. Next week, there's a mail-out for a survey. So, while I understand, or I'm hearing that this seems rushed, it's part of a process to protect the number of houses that are listed, they are on the National Register, by the way, even though they're not listed as historic buildings, they are contributing resources, every address is listed on the National Register that is contributing on.
Even as non-internal or listed?
Well, it was said as on.
Sure. Just, just as a quick follow-up here, it kinda goes to, and I'm agreeing, you, you know where I stand in terms of protecting the projects. I, I am for preserving the history of the projects, but I also agree that I, I don't know if a 120-day moratorium without having or knowing the plan is, is the best idea. Taking Council President Taylor's suggestion, I, I like this idea of a special called workshop. I'm also not completely against a moratorium, a temporary moratorium, until that workshop occurs. You want outreach, you want the community's feedback, I think everyone would want their opinion heard, and this gives you the best medium to, to hear from everyone. So, with, with that, I, I mean, I, I like the idea of a workshop, so.
Yes, sir? Thank you. Thank you, and I, I agree, you know, I've, I've been in trust for 44 years, and some of you guys aren't even that old, so, I've been out a lot, and, and I do cherish the project section. I've lived in it, I've owned several houses there. I do like what the foundation has done to educate and bring information out, to expose the knowledge and the background and the history, and how this whole thing got started. You know, some people live in their project that may not even know that, you know, in 1936, the Roosevelt, you know, started this, you know, started this plan. I think it's something to protect. I don't agree that we, that we're gonna allow Mr. and Ms. Russo to, to not be able to tear their house down. That, that's perfectly fine, I have no problem with that. What I do like, the fact that, I think the foundation is trying to accomplish, is to build something back in the architectural style of the project section, historical project section. There's houses there that are really out of character. I know Mr. Nixon's son had a plan on Meadow Lane, and we asked him to, I, I didn't ask him, but he was asked to change a few things, make it look more in tune with the project section. He gladly did so, at his expense. So, I think what this foundation is trying to do is just, we're not gonna tell you what you can or can't do with your home as far as tearing it down, remodeling, we're just gonna, we're trying to put a plan together, they're trying to put a plan together, I understand, that keeps it in tune with architectural style of the area, and that, that's what they're doing. And I do like Council President Taylor's suggestion to have a workshop designated, you know, to Kahaba Project. And, and, you know, I think you've had three, three, three meetings, and they've been very well-attended, anywhere from 25 to 40, maybe 50 people came, and they're having them continually. So, I think that really, the more you educate of what they're trying to do, back in 2017, we did a moratorium, I think it was 17, maybe 18, you know, the federal commissions came in, and that got real restrictive, and I was even uncomfortable with that. In fact, you know, I don't wanna be able to tell you what's gonna happen with your home. You know, Kathy Brown's got a beautiful house there, but it looks in the style of the Kahaba Project. I knew the garbage when they lived there, and, you know, some of it, probably bought it from, but they've done a great job keeping it in tune with the Kahaba look, the project look. And that's really, I think, from talking to Ms. O'Brien and her group, that's really what they're trying to do. And, and, you know, I am, I think that the timelines to, 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 you know, pump the brakes and slow it down may be moratorium, but I don't wanna put that in place by Council, Councilman Short, who said, "We don't wanna do that unless we have to, and we don't have to, with a workshop, we can all come together and have some sort of an agreement of what we're trying to accomplish." So, I think we all need to hear, all of you've been to the meetings that the foundation has had, but, but come out to those, and if we have a workshop where we can all come together, and all understand what we're trying to do, but then we can say, "Okay, the majority wants this, or the majority wants that," then out there, we'll move forward from there. Thank Councilman Cook.
Council President, I also met with Amy privately, and attended one of the workshops that they put together, and it was very informative, I learned a lot about the Kahaba history that I did not, and appreciate your efforts. I too agree with Council President Taylor on doing a workshop, a civilized workshop, where we can all sit around, and have our opinions and our thoughts listened to. I am not for a moratorium on this short notice, but I am for booking, for getting the workshop on the books very quickly.
Thank you, Council President. I also am in support of a workshop, Council President Taylor's idea of a workshop, but I'm also supportive of Councilman Short's suggestion that possibly, we could do a moratorium until we get the workshop, only if it, grandfathers in, those people who already have permits. We don't want anyone stopping if, if someone has a permit and it's already gone forward. And so, I guess I'm asking, but I'm not sure who to ask, if that was the, if that's what's on the table here. I assume that when we're asking for a moratorium, it would already grandfather and anybody who's already been approved. This would be for new applications, is that correct? Or, where do I, where do I send that question? Do I ask you, do I ask you?
I would...
I would send it to my lawyer, so you wouldn't see it. Yeah. But I don't mind, so.
But that's, that's, I mean, correct me if I'm, okay. So, and, and that's all. As long as it included everyone, as long as we did not stop anyone who already has a permit, then I would be in favor, but I, I do believe that a, a workshop is, would be a good idea. That's all.
Okay. Well, and then, I, I've heard, I've heard what everybody said, and I, I appreciate that, and, you know, Councilman Cook said, his goal was not to, to stop somebody from doing what they wanna do on their property, a moratorium stops somebody from what they want to do on their property, plainly simple. I, I would like for us not to do a moratorium, I'd like for us to get the meeting set up, and let's get, come together, let's see what the plan is, and then, we can, we can, we can make a decision. Well, and then, I, I've heard, I've heard what everybody said, and I, I appreciate that. And, you know, Councilman Cook said we, his goal was not to, to stop somebody from doing what they want to do on their property. A moratorium stops somebody from what they want to do on their property, plain and simple. I, I would like for us not to do a moratorium. Uh, I'd like for us to get the meeting set up, and let's get, come together. Let's see what the plan is, uh, and then we can, uh, we can, we can make a decision based on that. There, there's a lot of, there's a lot of unanswered questions, even about the moratorium as it's written. It says, except for public safety. Who determines what's public safety? Who, 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 tell me, tell me out of all the groups, who's gonna determine if it's a public safety issue? Is it the police chief? Is it, it, so there's just, there's just too many questions in this short notice that has to be answered, uh, for us to, to stop something or do something that's, uh, that we can come together in a workshop and, and try to come up with some answers.
Council President, may I address one thing? Uh, you said a moratorium would stop someone from doing what they want to do to their home. That's not what I understand a moratorium is. To me, a moratorium, like a hundred and twenty day moratorium, means we don't issue permits in any way to move forward with, with this renovation or a tear-down. You know, to me, that's the moratorium that, 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 that I'm thinking of. Not a, not a moratorium to, well, Mr. and Mrs. Ward can't do anything to their house.
But they can for a hundred and twenty days.
We, well, they can't because they can't get a permit.
Right. That's stopping.
After they get their guidelines in place.
Right, but for a hundred and twenty days, we're stopping them from doing what they want to do on their property.
Specifically regarding demolition, to be clear.
You know, if you put it that way, okay.
Yeah.
I think, I, I'm gonna chirp in from the city's standpoint, is I think it's been stated tonight that most of the council was in agreement that this was a, a shortened period of notification to a lot of citizens. Obviously, these folks found out about it, they have their issues over here. I'm, I'm really concerned about the legal ramifications. If we do something this fast, this hastily, we're at having an opportunity to provide good reasons. And Councilor, if I'm wrong, we might have a chance to really dive into this. I don't think that a moratorium right now is the proper thing to do. I think she got it backwards. I think she should have already presented some things to the council that they're considering before we consider a moratorium. Unfortunately, she, you know, you didn't present anything. You need a hundred and twenty days to do it. My question is, we've got to, there's two hundred and eighty-seven peo, houses. We don't have a, a, a third of those people even know about the meeting tonight, probably. And we're gonna put a moratorium on an area that's gonna affect people that may or may not already have plans and money set aside to do alterations to their house or their property. It's just not the right time to do it. I would encourage the council to consider sending a meeting, a special call meeting as soon as possible. Let's lay it out there, let's weigh it, and you guys decide what's best. And we have a chance to consult with our council on any legal ramifications that we may have that are involved in this.
Council President.
Yes, sir.
Um, if I may, address JR for a second. JR, do we have any, uh, current applications for demolition?
No, they were none presented to design review last night, so it'd be another month before another one could be presented.
So, just from my understanding, it will be one month before, uh, anyone could present a plan for demolition, before you would approve it, right?
Correct. Because it would have to go to designer review first.
Okay. Um, and, and with that, uh, you know, and, and Rick can chime in if he wants, uh, we've, we've got a month to play with here. I, I'd like to do this in the next two weeks, if possible, to speed this process up. Um, so, we kind of have a moratorium in place, based on what I'm, what you're telling me, JR, we kind of have a moratorium already in place until the next design review.
I wouldn't say that, but.
No?
We have one.
So, so, Rick, would there be any, I mean, I'm trying to figure out how to phrase this properly. Um, in terms of show, someone would have to show harm being done in order to put the city in, in some form of liability. Uh, we've got, we've got a month. I, I, I think we have to act quickly, and that's, and that's all I'm trying to.
Uh, I, I see what you're saying, and I, I want to, I just want to caution all the council, let, let's don't put our, our legal counsel in, in dire straits tonight and ask him to render an, an opinion or something on, something he has. No, he, he found out two days ago. I mean, we don't, we, we don't need to ask him legal questions off, from the, from the bench. Um, we'll, there'll be time for that, for us to do that. So I think we just have to be careful that we ask him, uh, to render an opinion on something that, whatever he says, you're gonna take as the, the gospel that he hadn't, he hasn't had time to do what he needs to do on that yet.
Council President.
Yes, sir.
I also want to remind, uh, everyone here, and, and especially those as well, there is a, a residential zone in the Kahaba Project area that could resolve a lot of these. It was put in place in early two thousands, RCP Residential Kahaba Project. Nix Historic District is there. They have a right to join. I think the city, uh, if you have enough people that are interested to do that, if there's any fees involved in that as far as changing the zone, then I think the city could consider even waiving those to show good faith, if, if they want to join. And if they join that district, then, then they can create it, and you got two hundred and eighty-seven people. This, Amy said that, you know, people didn't know about it. Uh, well, you know, there's a reason they don't know about it. Uh, you know, they're not interested in it, so. So I would say it's, it's in our ordinances if somebody wants to join it. Uh, it's a Kahaba Project, uh, Nix Historic District that was laid out in, uh, two thousand and two, I believe it is.
Two thousand and two, of course.
And we haven't had anybody apply for that.
Yeah, and that's there, and, and if you want to see it.
And I'm sure the council would give great links to come up with that.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and there is a, you, you can, as, as a personal resident there, you can apply for rezoning for your property, which would be from R-two to RCP, which is.
R-one.
R-one to R, RCP, which is Residential Kahaba Project District. It has some restrictions and guidelines, and, you know, you could, you could, I, I mean, if you got a hundred or two hundred houses that wanted to join that, then I, I, I would say if you wanted, you know, make some more strict guidelines in there, you could. Um, I, it, it would have been interesting in two thousand and three or two, when this was done, if we'd have had some homes get in there, because then, by now, we'd have been able to know, did it add value to the property or did it take away value? We'd, we'd know some of that by now. Uh, but we don't have anybody that's applied for that yet. But it's, it's available. Um, it, I, I mean, I think it would make a huge statement if, if, if a hundred homes joined the, the residential CP district.
Council, Council President.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I agree on that when that was done in two thousand and one or two, approved, and approved. And if I'm wrong, it worked to be an ordinance. We have to have a public hearing?
I, 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 I mean, I don't know, I mean, I don't know if this.
Have one of them.
I don't know if it has to be an ordinance. I just know if it would prove that adding a section, an immediate section to our zone. I bet council.
And none of us, none of us were on that when, when that happened. So was it done properly? I can't tell you that it was. What I can tell you is for the last nineteen years, it's been there, and it's never been questioned about, uh, was it done properly, was there a public? Nothing's ever been said about it in nineteen years. And so now for that to be an issue is, is a little bit strange to me that we would make that an issue that something done nineteen years ago wasn't done properly when it hadn't been mentioned for nineteen years.
May I speak? We spoke to the two co-authors of the Planning and Zoning Rewrite in two thousand. So in two thousand, that's when, uh, RCP was added, Section Thirty-two, Planning and Zoning. There was a public hearing, because it has to be when you have a, a change in zoning or amendment to zoning ordinance. Uh, so there was a public hearing, but there was not a public hearing that sealed out thirty point oh. And that is, so it's two hundred and fifty-page rewrite that was, was passed with a public hearing. But that is why it's so little known. Um, there, it was not sealed out for a public hearing on that issue. So yes, there's been years and even some council members that were not aware that that was on the books just to show how little it is now.
We know now, and we've known, we've known for the last couple of months.
Let me ask you this.
We, 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 hang on, hang on, hang on one second. We know now, we know for the last couple of months, and in the last two months, there's not been one application to join this. So, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying, but there is.
Can I ask, where does it state in that section, which I've read and reread? Because we thought if this is already on the books, this is achieving some of the goals that we're looking at to bring about this district-wide protection, um, that is shown, yes, to improve property values. That is the most studied area of historic preservation's property values. Moving off of that, though, where does it say in that ordinance that you choose to, um, I, I believe there is that you have the right to join, and if you join, you can create it. It doesn't say in that ordinance that you have to choose. It doesn't say, it doesn't spell out that this is an option. It just says this is a zoning of the district.
Yeah, you don't have to. Every, every homeowner has a right to request a petition to have their property rezoned to any, any other thing that they want to. If you, if, I mean, somebody in that district could say, um, it's, it's R-one. I want to, I want to rezone it to RG for, put a garden home there. They have the right to do that, so it, it don't have to sp- spell it out. Any homeowner has the right to petition us to have their zone changed.
May I make one more thing for us, and one more comment? I wanted to speak to Mr. Ramada directly only because you were the first one to make a comment that many people seconded after you. And you said you would oppose this, um, um, historic preservation effort if this is the same as a few years ago. So I want to tell you, I want to tell everyone in the room, this is not the same approach that was taken a few years ago. So I do hope you stay open-minded about it. Uh, we've learned a lot in the last five months. I have a day job, too. I have children. This, we don't do this because we have extra time to do it. We do it because we care about it. We do it because the more we've learned about this, it's the, this is, um, this district is unique in the nation. That makes trustful unique in the nation, and that is an advantage to the city. Um, but in terms of historic preservation, I want to be clear, it is not about preventing change. It is about managing the change that goes forward. It is not about eliminating the ability to demolish a home. It's about limiting, maybe the, not, not eliminating the option. It's about limiting the reasons for why it could, or placing incentives for rehabilitating the home. And, um, I just wanted to, to address some of those, um, those comments. And thank you for being open-minded, because I hear you're coming from a strong position, but you're also saying I oppose it if this is the case. And, and I think many of you are willing to hear it out, and I think that that needs to be happening in discussions. So it sounds like you guys are working towards that.
I think that's a good plan.
Alan, you said earlier this was put in place in two thousand and, two thousand and whatever. And you said if people had joined it, we'd be able to track it and see if that would increase by surprise. Tell me so.
That's good.
Okay.
I don't know if there's any political to that, but.
So nobody's done that, right? But what we do know, what we do know is the way it is now, over the nineteen years, values have increased.
All right. Anyone else?
Uh, I do have a question. Um, when was the, uh, the Heritage Foundation founded, for starters?
This year.
It's this year.
That March.
Well, to Mr. Cook's point, he was talking about Joel Nixon's house. His house was completed in two thousand and nineteen, went up to eight in this year. There was some, a process in place, and I feel like a group like this kind of undermines the trust of people who want to move into the area and do a lot of good things. We don't need to have our hands held. There was a process in place. There was a historical society that helped guide Joel through that. He, I talked to him about different things on, on the houses. I grew up in the projects. My, my mom did. Grandpa, she lives in the area. His parents lived in the projects, so, um, I feel like a lot of families have moved in and want to move back and do the right things, but they just don't want to be the least.
And, and just so we know, just so we, we were clear, we, we, the city did the moratorium last time in order to put a process in place. A process was put in place, and that process was that when somebody was gonna, um, remodel a house down there, they would come to design review. Mayor, don't let me say this wrong, because I, this is all from memory. They would come to design review. Design review would make some suggestions to them, which, which also included demolition, would make some suggestions to them. Uh, I think, JR, in most cases, people have accepted those, um, suggestions. Not always, but in most cases, they have, uh, accepted those recommendations, absolutely. And, and, for instance, Mr. Nixon did, and, uh.
And we did too.
And it cost them a lot of money. So it, we, there is a process in place. Whether you agree with the process or not is a whole different, that's why we need to have a, a workshop. Because if you agree with the process, fine, you may not agree with the process, but there is a process in place.
Council President.
Yes, sir.
Um, as we're getting real close to that six o'clock mark, uh, if I could make the suggestion, since we have a month to play with, uh, if we can all look at our calendars, um, the design review meeting's gonna be on the one, two, three, the twenty-third, I believe. Um, I, I would make the suggestion that we table the moratorium and put it back on that special call workshop with consideration at that time to hear from everyone.
As, as a matter of procedure, we wouldn't have to table it. It would have to be asked to be put on the agenda. So we wouldn't have to table it, just, it, it, they would, somebody would have to suggest it be put on the agenda for tonight. If not, it'll, it'll be carried over till, till that such time. I, I would, I, I agree with that. I wish, if, Mayor, if you could send out, if, if everybody ends up agreeing with that, if you could send out dates that, several dates for us over the next couple of weeks, that we can get together, and then, then we'll, we'll do that.
Council President, um, while we're all discussing it, um, now that we're looking at dates, we need a couple of weeks for this, I just want to make clear who's responsible. Is it the city responsible? Or are we asking the Heritage Foundation to, uh, notify all two hundred and, how many did we say? Two hundred and forty-seven? Eighty-seven. Um, who, who notifies all two hundred and eighty-seven, uh, homeowners that fall in this, that they're invited to this? Because we do want to make sure that no one says they didn't know about it, or, you know, that everyone has property.
I think we'll do our part to let everybody in the city know it's happening. And if we'll do a joint vigil for the foundation and some of those here, I don't think it should be very difficult.
Scott can help us out.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm much here tonight, so.
Okay. Any other comments?
We've got some fishermen in Long Island.
Yeah, we're, we're ready. So the meetings will start in just a couple of minutes. Thank y'all.